So I'm just gonna introduce our lovely speaker and our last speaker of the book study. So Mary Ann Baza is a volunteer through CPA New Brunswick and CPA New Brunswick is one of my partners that I work with. So Danielle at CPA had actually a lot of interest in when she put out the call to find a presenter for our last session. And and Mary Ann is a fan of The Automatic Millionaire herself. So that's okay Nancy, no problem. That's fine. So we're gonna hear from her and just like we always do quite a quick little presentation and then a Q and A. So feel free if you do have to, if you're driving, if you wanna kinda listen and maybe watch it later. I am gonna post it on our team and on my website. So I will hand the floor to you, Mary Ann.
Thank you. I'll try to share my screen.
Sure.
I have my script here. Oh, sorry.
Okay.
I think I'm, I have my scripts. I'm thinking of how do I share my screen while I'm reading my script?
I know, I know.
Hold on please. I think I need to share it in a different side there. Just so, you know, the screen is all clear.
Yes. Looks good. We can see it.
I think I'm gonna show this up. Alright?
Okay, yeah, perfect.
I'm showing a slideshow. Can you see my screen, please? A slideshow without the screen or without the notes, rather.
We don't, we, we do see the notes. We see, we see the notes and we see the slides down the slide.
Just so you won't get distracted with the notes. That's why I have to make sure.
Okay, no problem.
Sorry about that. And it's recorded. Oh my goodness. I may not be able to see the chat though, so I really encourage like, please, yeah, thank you.
I'll do that. Okay.
Good afternoon. Yeah. Good afternoon, everyone. So I'll, I'll try to maximize the, the time. I'm hoping I'll be able to impart some, some things today. Not just related to being an accountant or finance, but more of a personal milestone. Or I'd say a personal testimonial on how David Bach has, has contributed to, to me as a person as well. So good afternoon again. I'm Mary Ann Baza. As mentioned by Jill, thank you. I was a volunteer for CPA, through CPA New Brunswick, and I'm really excited to be here. Hoping to impart or trickle some thoughts about our book, The Automatic Millionaire. I'm, I'm happy to take questions during or even after the presentation. So we, we do conversation as opposed to one, you know, one line and so on. So feel free to interrupt. I can edit my, my notes here as needed. So a bit of background, maybe just a preview of, of how the book has, has helped me before and, and, or, or before the, read the book. What am I? So when our family has migrated from the Philippines to Canada in 2017, I'm a thirty-eight-year-old mom of three. And some of this would be our students for sure. So I, I, I would say that I'm on this boat. Like it, it has been a, I'm, I'm on, in the boat of, of The Automatic Millionaire, but on a Philippine currency. Imagine moving one dollar over forty. So I have to, all the, the funds that I, they have, I have to, it's, it's more of a, I'm, I'm aged closing to forty and I have to restart the life phase. I need to build my equity fast. And that was when David Bach's book or, or his guidance has been really helpful. So that was prior to reading David Bach's book. So glad that I was, I'd say I was in that financial discipline. I started with a Smart Women Finish Rich book up until his latest book, Go Green. And I also follow him on Instagram. So, oh, fan mode.
You're a fan.
Yeah, I, I'll follow through more on the testimonial at the end of the presentation. So just, I can go back on the topic at hand. So on the next slide, oops, I have to click here instead. Okay. So on the next, next slide, I just picked some snippets of, of the notes from the book, just so we can focus on, on the highlights and so on. So I, I recognize that before I proceed, we as individuals have different priorities and maybe even at the different stages in life. So any inputs here could be applicable to some, if not all. So first, on the chapter seven, it says that debt-free lifestyle. So first bullet that was mentioned there, that borrow money to make money. So I always have this mantra, as possible, invest in assets that go up, or we call it in financial term, appreciate in value. And that assets that go down or depreciates in value. What are those samples? So assets that potentially go up in value would include real estate investment, stock and bond investments. Some are rare art, collectibles, but the latter would need for sure more expertise. The, on the other hand, the assets that usually go down in value and sometimes fast would include the vehicles or the building or equipment. We always, as accountant, advise that if we purchase an asset, it's advisable to buy this if it will generate income for us. For example, maybe vehicle uses Uber or an equipment to produce products that can be sold or the passion, you, you do some, some knitting and so on that you sell, something like that. So that's, that's one. On the next bullet, there are, there will be quite a lot of, of people that will try to, advise to quick fix, or we call it credit repair scams. So some of the credit repair red flags that I would share would be, some would be requesting upfront payment or offering instant approval. So these are the triggers that would tell you like, maybe something's not right here, or sometimes they use really high-pressure sales tactics. So on the screen, I know in David Bach's book, it's more of focused on the US, the one that I read. So here on the screen, from Canada.ca, I'm sharing some, and I can share the slides too. Sharing some of the specific link to Canada that if, if as needed, we would, we have a credit counselor or counseling agency that can provide range of services, one-on-one counseling, depending, depending on your status or even debt management plans. And maybe to be more specific, specific agencies, they also have these links. At least we're guided that these are the right links that we can go to. And that is scam. So still on the debt-free lifestyle, the next bullet in the book that I'd like to expound is that says, Operation No More Debt. Who wanted the debt? So we wanted to highlight, it's no more debt. So some of the steps that was mentioned by, by David for sure is stop digging, he said, get rid of credit cards. But I, I'd like to add that, yeah, get rid of credit card that does not add value. I myself has multiple credit cards for multiple purpose, but I made sure that I, I don't spend more than I can afford to pay in a month. So the other point that was mentioned is increasing credit limit. It, it will be good if the purpose is to be used for increasing your debt equity ratio, which is good for borrowing, but not to be used in making more want purchases. So maybe just to highlight on that. Multiple cards are, can be used for also specific purpose. So for example, I have, I have a card that I use for wholesale purposes. For a family of five, it's really useful. So although it has an annual fee, the annual rebates that you get from purchasing is offset with the annual due. So basically you don't pay anything. On the second card, for example, I only use this for big installment purchases, like appliances, sports equipment and tires. And I time when I have to purchase this, like maybe when it's thirty times points and so on. So you'll be surprised, you can buy one or two shoes with those rebates, quite frankly. So you, you maximize the use of the credit card and not you being, you know, following the credit card. I mean, you, you, you utilize what's the benefit of the card instead. The, the step two here for no more debt mentioned is renegotiate the interest rate on your, on your debt, which is possible. Just to add on this, maybe on the context, I would really encourage and advise an annual review with your bank advisor or financial advisor. Me for a financial advisor, I usually use my life insurance plan advisor. Their services are free. So just to check on statuses of your finances, sharing where are you right now, getting some insights from them. Because they're, 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 they're in the market. They're, that's their job. So any updates in the market, they know. And they can give you some opinions and thoughts, which you can bring to yourself and then make a basis for the decision. At some point, the bank advisor has some available perks too, like maybe waived annual fees. Like in the, just few months back, I was very conscious about not a credit to the, or, or payment, like, because I have limited transaction on my bank. And then all the while, I didn't know that when I asked about my advisor, he said that, oh, you can already avail of unlimited transactions with waived fees. So how good is that? I mean, if I did not check on my bank, I wouldn't know that I already have this, this, this privilege that is sitting there, had I not asked. So I mean, this is simple question. So that you, you could open for you. Step three would be, oh, sorry. Step three would be the, it mentioned in the book as well, the pay for the fast. And this is a tongue twister for me. Pay for the past and pay for the future. So striking a balance about not really putting all the cash in paying the debt, but ensuring that it's spread out. Building emergency fund and savings, prioritizations, what's, what's really a, a prioritization really big, uh, be, uh, plays a huge role in this, making sure that you, you are able to spread out. For example, I know I have a monthly contribution in the RRSP, but if I wanted to pay a debt, I reduce some portion of the RRSP, shift it to the debt. And then, I mean, on an annual basis, I could lump sum eventually to my RRSP before my, before the year-end tax, if I have cash. So just timing and prioritization is helpful. On step four, oh, this is great, planning on the, the, being done on the last payment of your debt. Like the, the, the first step for sure is you have to list down, know all of the, the debts as applicable, mortgages, credit cards, how much is the amount owing, interest percentages, if not being paid in full, and rank this from the higher interest to low. And then prioritize to pay off the higher interest first. It works really, because you don't wanna be spending too much on, on interest. You wanted to make, make the most of, out of your money. I mean, you, we, we, we worked for it.
Exactly.
And then of course, the, the make it automatic, make it like credit cards, make it automatic for insurance payments, automatic debit transactions for life insurances, RRSP and so on. For mortgage payment, I know David Bach's book has always mentioned about the bi-weekly payment setup. I use a weekly accelerated and it's available.
Okay.
So the weekly, yeah, there, there's even before the weekly accelerated, there's a weekly, there's a weekly accelerated. So I use the, I, I, I cannot expound yet what's the difference, because I didn't research it back, but I do the weekly accelerated. So talk with your.
Okay, that's, that's smart. Yeah.
It is. So if, if you're faster with the bi-weekly, you'll be faster.
Yes, with the weekly.
Exactly. So yeah, check that out. It's a, it's an, yeah. And then for, for the next chapters, yeah, I'm, I'm struggling with the left and right. But if you can see my screen on the other, an extra slide here, the debt-free lifestyle. So it's more of just snippets of my personal sharing and to, uh, uh, maybe before we even get into resolving the debt, how do we prevent from getting a debt or even availing the best value of the purchases? So the first bullet here, it's, it would be a, a no-brainer, healthy wealth. I mean, as David Bach said, pay yourself first, but I'd say take care of yourself. Self-love. It's just Valentine's Day. So self-love and so on. And then the, the next bullet would be recycle and reuse for sure. Personally, I love plants. So I have a couple of indoor, for, I, I, instead of throwing those, you know, cake plastic packages, I, I clean that up and I use it as a plant pot holder. So I don't need to buy the fancy ones or, or use the bottles as cookie jars and so on. The third bullet would be the new food, no food waste stage or no leftover. So a quick reminder, maybe if we haven't done so, what's in our fridge? Are there leftovers that can be turned into a pizza, fried rice, spring roll, French toast, and the list goes on. So we, we just need to be attentive on the expiration date so that we can cook this beforehand. Next would be what's in our cupboard? Are there cookies, cereals, haven't been attended? So the point is really, why not use it now before it expires, instead of us going to the grocery, buying new stocks, we're just overlapping and so on.
Right.
So at, at home, I'd say we even do have a no left, a, a leftover party. So every piece of pieces of leftover, I put it in the table. Each one should get a share, no exception.
That's so smart.
Yeah. So at the end of the, of the meal, maybe I, I have some treats for them, the piece of their favorite dessert. I mean, it's, it's just an offset and so on. So, yeah. So if there's other party, I have the left, leftover party. And then just to continue on the bullet, the repair and maintenance for sure, making sure that it saves money. If you have a, there, if you have attended to for some of the repairs that will be, you know, instead of delaying it, it will worsen.
Yes.
And then for, for the, the other bullets, buy seasonal food. Personally, rice is life for us. So in January, I know every lunar new year, rice prices are really discounted. So that's when I stock up.
Okay, smart.
On, on late spring, for example, we eat more corn than maybe in the winter, because it, it could be more expensive. So just timing in terms of what are the seasonal food, because you can get the best value of your money. The, the other bullet here, uh, the, the last bullet, and I'd say you may thank yourself for this, try it in a year. Stay home or go offline during the Prime Day, Boxing Day, Cyber Monday and so on. Unless you are really into a buy and sell business and you don't really like a, a need for it.
Yes. It's so tempting.
Exactly. That's what marketing does. That's the company, that's their job. Fool you into it. So and then watch out for, of course, these are credit cards, but we also need to watch out for cash spending. Yard sale, marketplace posting, thrift store, I'm in it. So I, I usually, I'm, I used to go to most of this, but then I realized it's just piling up in the house and so on. The more storage I see, the more that I feel like I have to fill this in.
Exactly.
Yeah. So keep minimalized, declutter, or donate, sell every season as possible. And make sure that all the family members are on board. Otherwise you'll be the, the, the negative party.
Exactly.
So on the, jumping into the chapter eight, I, I tried to cover as much just so we have more time for the question and answer. I have to push this meeting here, just so you can see the full screen. So making a difference with the automatic typing, I, I hope I pronounced it right. So the, the term type is derived from the old English word teogatha, which means tenth. In biblical terms, typing refers to the practice of giving a tenth or ten percent of one's income or resources to support the work of the church or the religious community. Giving back can be monetary or non-monetary, and we have lots of opportunities here in Canada. So as mentioned in David Bach's book, we just need to ensure that the larger part of the monetary donations go to the needy and not to the administrative costs of running the charitable organizations. So myself, I, I do, uh, uh, non-monetary, like I volunteer as board member to a nonprofit organization as a way of giving back or engagements like this, financial literacy and so on. Sometimes I do at school in my alma mater in the Philippines. So I have to stay at three hours in the morning just to cover the opposite time zone. So, so for annual monetary, I'm an advocate of UNICEF and Red Cross as well, and just recently the YMCA. So it's that feeling when you make a difference to somebody's life, especially if they didn't expect it. It's just priceless. So on a, on a CPA term now, we're, we're going to the step four here. Sorry, I'm, I'm all over the place, but let me know.
That's okay.
Yeah. So keep track of your taxable, tax deductible contribution. Some tax tip here, that when you donate in a year, you don't need to declare that in the same year. You can hold on to that for the next five years. The reason for that is you may have a bigger tax credit when you have an accumulated donation. So yeah, just to illustrate quickly and the next slide. So here, if, if for example, you have accumulated a donation for the next, for the, for the five years, you have a federal credit in those percentages for the first two hundred and eight hundred or in excess of the one thousand. And then you also have, get the provincial credit. I, I only noted it's specific to Envy, but these are varying percentages based on the province. And you, you can get higher tax credit based on that. So tips and key takeaway from CPA.
Great.
Yeah. On the, so just a last bullet here, maybe just that, because I've, I've, when I was reading the book, I see some testimonials at the back of David Bach's book. I'm not yet there, but hopefully soon. So just as mentioned to you, I'd like to share back, just to continue my story. So when we migrated in the twenty seventeen, we, we rented an apartment for a year, just to, to get the, our feet on the ground, build history credit and so on. And so before reading David Bach's book, we are a household, typical household. We wanted to save money, buy a residential home to live until we retire. But after the extra knowledge from the book learned, it was very pivotal for us, going out of our comfort zone or just taking a leap or risk, as I may call it, onto this journey. So twenty eighteen, bought our residential home. Two years after the earned equity, we refinanced it. See, I learned it from David Bach. That was back when the interest was record low. And then we used the funds as down payment to purchase a rental property. Three years after, we sold, twenty twenty-three, we sold our house from the Philippines. We used the fund so we can visit there for a month, enjoy time with the family. And we used the remaining proceeds and the earned equity from the first rental property to purchase another rental property just this January. So it's, um, it's a roller coaster. I'd say it's a journey, as I'd say. So for sure, all, all these purchases, you have to ensure that sufficient funds are, are, are there for closing costs. I'm not gonna sugarcoat this, but it is always challenging. It's so scary after every purchase, because you have to cash out. Imagine your cash getting drained out of your bank account in just an instant during closing day. It's scary. It's, it's overwhelming. But I trust that historically, it does always gets better year after that. So, so just another few pointers for financial, for first-time home buyers, you can go as low as five percent down payment. It's an insured mortgage through CMHC, provided you have paid twenty percent of your first mortgage, then you are ready to make the second home purchase. And then any second home purchase, the minimum down payment would be the twenty percent. So, yeah, so that's, that's the quick pointers in there. So the, I think that, just a quick story before I close the session. It's funny, because the day before I went to the, to, to get a personal draft for a down payment, I read, I was preparing for this session. So I read David Bach's book and part of there saying that when you, when you request for a personal draft, sometimes based on your account, you can be waived with fees. So the next day, when I went to the bank, I said, can you check my, my account if I, I, I'm waived with the, first, the, the draft fees? And the, the teller said, no, but, I mean, it's your first time to order for a personal draft. So I'm waiving you the nine point ninety-five fee. That's equivalent to two bagel packs at Costco. Basically, yeah, I, I, I hope I did not overwhelm you with all this. And I trust that you get a few pointers or reminders from this session. And I wish everyone the best in our, in, in our journey to financial freedom.
Absolutely. I, I found that so valuable, Mary Ann, especially like I have a few questions and comments. I'm gonna open it up to our teachers first, if there are any. And I'm still in the sun here. I'm trying to escape my sun. Any, any questions from the crowd? I know we have some people on with us today that haven't been able to join in the past. So any comments or questions?
I have one. This is Megan. I don't know why my video's not working. Worked yesterday, but, oh, well. Yeah, I have no good excuse for the last meeting. I was totally planning on it and then totally forgot. I just went home, made supper. And after that, I thought, oh my, I missed something. I did have a question though about, because I had gone into the bank and I, about RRSPs. And like I've been saving some money. I've been actually saving ten percent for quite a while. Another book I read before this was called Debt-Free Living by Mary Hunt or something like that. It's more of a religious book. But she talks a lot about tithing too. So anyways, I started you to both of those things at the same time. But, um, yeah, I asked my banker, I was like, I wanna start a RRSP, cause I just never have. And she actually was like, well, are you sure? Cause you have a very good pension as a teacher. And I mean, all that kinda goes over my head. So like I had been saving in a TFSA. So I guess my question is, what do a lot of teachers do? Do they just put their kinda savings into a TFSA only or RRSP? Cause she wasn't, she was like, well, if you have tax breaks at the beginning, but then when you have it, you take it out at the end, when you have a pension, then you pay taxes then. And then I kinda looked at her and I thought, oh, I don't know. Then I just left it.
Okay. Mary Ann, Mary Ann, do you have any comments on that one?
I, I may not be an expert, but I'll, I'll try to put some thoughts, agree on the, the, it said, it, it's, uh, it's the first time that I've, I've heard about, not, not, not on the RRSP opinion, but, um, I, I would say that it's, it's a, it's a yes and a no, because he, he's right that the RRSP initially will be, have a tax, what was the term? You won't need to pay for the tax because it's deductible fully in your income. But when you retire, when you started to withdraw from the fund, that's when you add those money to your total income and then it's taxable. So if you're, if you're looking at, on the retirement, you have a high pension and you add up that RRSP, then you are looking at a, a tax bracket. Are you in the low tax bracket or the high tax bracket based on your estimated income when you retire? So that's, that's, that's the thing. But, but in terms of now, you can, and, and it's earning, they're also investing it in the stock. So it's not just money you're putting in, it's also growing. So by the time that you withdraw it, it has earned money as well. So I'd say, yes, you may invest, I would rec, I would not recommend, maybe. I would advise that RRSP is a good way to go, but maybe strike a balance in terms of, you don't need to put all money in the RRSP. You could spread it out. TFSA, TFSA is a good way to also do stock investments. It's, uh, you, you don't, you're also interest-free or tax-free in terms of the earnings you have in the TFSA. So yeah, it's, it's more of what's really the goal in, in your head. Like if you, if you retire and you feel like you're in a upper, higher bracket, maybe RRSP would add up more into that taxable income when you retire.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Thanks for the question, Megan. That's, that's great. Good, good conversation. Anyone else have any questions? I would love Mary Ann to do a whole session on what credit cards she has and the benefits from each one. I am so, I am so fascinated. I mean, sometime, maybe another time, but I, I'm always looking at credit cards and how I can, you know, the benefit of them and what the annual fee is and kind of, I'm a huge fan. And we've talked about this as a group of like, I have the PC Financial Grocery Points. And I love that, but I also, I also have like a Marriott Bonvoy account. So when I book hotel rooms, you know, there's such a savings there. So and my colleague who has the Center of Excellence for Digital Innovation is just, he is like a credit card guru. He spends hours researching like the, the benefits and while, all the while, keeping a good credit score. So, and that's the important part, like you said, yeah. So.
It's overwhelming. But yeah, you would, it's, it's very, it's a huge annual fee, but you don't see the benefits. You, you could actually offset those fees with rebates and all. Yeah.
Yeah. And in some cases, they waive the first year too. So just, just maybe another topic for another session someday. Any final questions? We're, we're at four oh eight. We have two minutes left. Anything else?
Jill knows my, my email as well. I'm open. If you, if you have additional questions, you'd like to reach out, just to, you know, get the, because I've, I've been through the process, just sharing the experience.
Absolutely. Yeah. No, it's, it's great. And this is a very safe space, I find, for teachers. And we've gotten to know each other and, and we can talk. And the hope is that we'll impart this knowledge onto our students, especially high school teachers in the group. So.
Definitely, definitely. I, I, I have a quick sharing on that, my, my son, because we're, we're not, we have, we have the no leftover rule in the house. One time he, what he went back to, 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 from, from school to home. He said, oh, my classmates has this cheese in the lunchbox. He doesn't like the taste. We just throw it to the trash can. Why didn't he just bring it home? Like, oh my God.
You've trained him well. That's so great. Well, listen, thank you so much, Mary Ann. We really appreciate this. And you're, you're, you have a wonderful presentation. It was really user-friendly and easy to follow. So thank you again. And I'll thank Danielle for connecting us. And, and I might be calling on you again someday, if, maybe next year. You're great. Any final, yeah, no, it's been wonderful. I'm gonna stop the recording here. And I know that a lot of teachers are gonna probably head out home here shortly. So no, this was fantastic. Thank you so much.